Good evening. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for December 7th, 2021 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Defoe?
Here.
Ms. Selesny? Ms. Selesny? Mr. Friedman? Mr. Friedman? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Weigum?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Communications are the phone number for public comment would be 1-4-1-5-6-5-5-0-0-0-1, and you use access code 2-3-4-1-1-3-1-6-1-3-9.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We do not have any cases this evening, so I don't think we need to even open for public comment. I guess Brianna and I can ask, is there anybody else on the phone?
Hi, Jody. No, there isn't anyone on hold.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we will move into minutes. We have a set from October 5th. Anybody have... I have a real, real small item on page 5. I think I probably was just confusing my words. Page 5, line 4. I said, "So the city roll is complete instead of the roll call is..." Not really that important, but does anybody have anything else?
I didn't have anything.
Les, just that I struggled trying to get into you guys and never did make it. I would assume that ordinarily I would abstain because I wasn't there, but if I abstained, then we can't pass them because we don't have a quorum, right?
Mr. Friedman just joined us, so we should be okay if you do abstain, Mr. Weigum.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I can bypass the issue I saw on page 5 and just ask for a motion for the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will the city call the roll call on the minutes for October 5th, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny? Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Abstain.
Okay, so those minutes pass, 3 to 0 to 1 extension. We will move on to the minutes for October 19th. Did anybody have any corrections or edits?
I did not. Jason did not.
Thank you. I did not either.
I didn't have any.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for October 19th, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will the city call the roll on the minutes for October 19th, please?
Mr. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny? Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Abstain.
All right, so that motion carries 3 to 0 to 1 extension. So next on the agenda is, looks like a request to cancel the meeting for December 21st as there's no cases.
Ms. Weigum makes that motion.
Thank you very much. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. I think this will be all agreeing. Can everybody say aye, please?
Aye.
Okay, that's 4 to 0. Next up is our year-end business. So, oh, look at that fancy on our screen, our current officers. So it looks like we have election of officers, adoption of our calendar, and then reviewing the rules of procedure. So I'm happy to give up chair if somebody else wants to be chair. I'm also happy to continue as chair if nobody else wants to be chair.
I'm perfectly happy having you do it, Jody.
I'm happy with that as well.
Me too.
Okay, then, thank you. So then we need a motion to... Oh, and I would hope that, I think Ms. Selesny is probably fine saying secretary unless somebody else would like to take on the role of secretary. Any interest? No? Okay, then can I have a motion to continue the officers for 2022 of Jody Defoe as chair and Myra Selesny as secretary?
I make the motion.
Thank you.
That we keep current officers.
Second.
All right, I think all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's four yeses, four ayes, zero nays. And we move on to our calendar for 2022 that was provided, our proposed calendar that was provided in the packet. Anybody see any issues, concerns, conflicts? The proposed calendar is also back in council chambers, so we need to make sure... Was there some... Usually we make sure we're not around elections as council chambers can be used. So August, I think August 2nd is the primary? So that August 2nd meeting may be a problem?
What about October? There's nothing there.
Let's ask who put together the calendar. Brianna, was that you?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Through the chair, through the board, through the chair. So a couple things. As far as the dates go, I sent this proposed calendar to the clerk's office for their approval and to reserve council chambers. So if a date on here doesn't work, I haven't heard it back from them, but if it doesn't work, I'll let the board know. And then Ms. Selesny and I were working together and she sent me a list of dates for the Jewish holidays to avoid. And so basically, we didn't have any available dates in October. So if you guys want to triple up in November or maybe September, that's an option.
I would say we just watch caseload, and if we see the need, we can call a special meeting if necessary.
Okay.
But I do think August 2nd will be a problem because it's the first Tuesday after the first Monday, which means that's primary day. And unless the clerk is taken to a different location to store and count ballots, I don't think council chambers will be available on August 2nd.
Okay, I circled that date and made a note, so I'll make sure to ask them tomorrow and I can, you know, we can modify this calendar at our next possible meeting, which would be in person, January 18th.
Okay, and you know, we could also, I mean, we could try for one meeting in August, and again, if we have cases determined that we need a second if necessary.
Okay, I'll note that.
So, okay, anybody? Yes?
Madam Chair, I have a question?
Sure.
What is the maximum caseload that you can do in a night?
So we've not hit that. There, Ms. Selesny mentions where there used to be, like, I think 10 and 12 cases.
I heard 450 a year. A year. I was looking over some old cases and I noticed that some nights they went, yeah, 8 or 10 cases in a night. I don't know how long that took, but I was just curious to see if there was a maximum caseload and timeline that you would have to call the meeting. Can you go all night, or I mean, how does that work?
Right, I mean, so we've never, since I've been on the board for eight years, I don't think we've hit that. Nor do I think there's anything in our rules that identify, you know, a volume of cases that we would limit it to.
Is there a time that you would call it?
You know, I don't think we have that. At least it's not in our rules at this point, so...
This is Brianna, so through the chair to the board and Mr. Wilkins. When Ed said on the board, it was always, I don't think this is like a written rule, but he would always say, "Keep it at a six case maximum."
We've had, we've had up to nine way back, and we finished it, so I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think if we, for some reason, hit some kind of crazy building spree that's requiring tons of variances, then, you know, I think we address it. If we think every meeting's going to be going to, you know, midnight or something, but hopefully, we haven't been anywhere near that, thankfully.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. I appreciate it. All of a sudden, next caseload, we're going to have 10 cases, right? Okay, so I think we need a motion to approve the calendar. Is that right? I think we need to approve it. So can I have a motion to approve the proposed meeting schedule?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, that's 4 to 0. That's also approved, and Brianna, you'll let us know about August 2nd. I think we would understand if that had to be removed from the schedule. Okay, so then we are now to our rules of procedure. And I think we have city attorney, Don King, on the phone with us.
Yes, if I may, through the chair, I just want to say, I don't have anything to present because I wasn't sure what you are... I just received the invite and I just left another meeting, so I apologize because I wasn't sure what you wanted me to bring from our office. I can answer questions, but I don't have anything to present tonight. I received the invite and I wasn't sure if I was going to make it, but our other meeting did just end, so I don't know if anyone has any questions, concerns, and I can always get back to you before the January 18th meeting also.
Great, appreciate that. I think that's usually kind of how we've operated if, you know, nobody really has any questions in advance, and then as we get to talk in, something usually pops up. So anybody have any thoughts or changes after reading through the rules of procedure again? My only thought that I don't think people will support was if there was any interest in moving to requesting electronic files from our appellants instead of physical paper files.
I would support that. I would, I was presented, just as an aside, I was presented by, you know, I was, you know, a guy came up to me who had, was told by the planning commission that he needed a waiver and was, showed me the cost of the waiver itself, plus the expense of putting together the application. And it was a small thing, and he just decided not to do the whole project because of that, and I was wondering, you know, if some of these things need to be done in seven copies, if there was an electronic copy and it could just be forwarded to us, if there was a way that we could reduce the cost for people to submit these waivers, I don't know, you know, you know, if people can give us an electronic copy and save the cost of the materials, I mean, I may be able to increase our workload, but I think it'd be a lot easier for the applicants.
Well, and I was kind of thinking that too, because sometimes, like, you know, it might be easy if I could blow up or zoom in on some of these, you know, plans or whatever, but that I can't read the, you know, it's so small when you open it up and it's, you know, the size of a drafting table.
Yeah, and I'm always, you know, since we've been doing it electronically, I've always been impressed and helped out by some of the slides that I guess is Brianna that put them together, and it wasn't on the pieces of paper that I got, so if we could get those too, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, Brianna, is there any thought about how, when we go back to in-person, if this is still, because the planning commission does something like this with like a PowerPoint, right?
Okay, so through the board, through the chair, a few different things popped into my head as you guys were discussing that. Okay, so the first thing about electronic documents, I think, I want to say April or May of last year, when COVID first hit, we made it a rule that in, with the 12 sets of drawings that they have to submit to us, they also have to submit it electronically. So we are, we get everything electronically anyways. And then to build on that, the application is $40 and then the meeting fee is $400. And most of that $400 goes to advertising and our minutes, so I don't think it would help reduce the cost of the ZBA, you know, to submit a variance. But as far as like reducing paper load, that it would definitely be, you know, a huge help, especially when it comes to minutes, that's a lot of paper. And then as far as doing a PowerPoint, I don't think that would be a problem at all because cable and IT are both involved in making this meeting public when we are in council chambers. So I think that's something they would be able to accommodate as well.
So then, because there's screens, it's been so long since I've been in council chambers, there's screens, usually for the public. How would we view, would we need to bring a laptop with us if we wanted to view the PowerPoint or electronic files?
I do remember there was a huge screen behind where everyone sat, and that was a big thing, because if we were to present it, you guys would have to keep turning around and looking up, and you'd be like up close and personal with that screen. But there may be a way that IT could set up a separate computer or laptop where it would be in front of you. These are just questions I would have to send emails on tomorrow to find out for sure, but I think, you know, in 2022, it should be possible.
Yeah, because I mean, right now, we're requiring 12 copies. I think in Article 3, Section 2, Subsection B, I think, is where it says, like, people have to supply 12 copies of the plan, and I think that's, you know, maybe to the person that spoke to Mr. Friedman, was that, you know, again, depending on how big of a project it is, you know, some of these people submit 12 pages of drawings, you know.
And some of these blueprints can be expensive. I've asked, you know, I've had people that I know who have had meetings before the board, and I've asked them before I toss them in the trash, "Do you want those plans back?" And two out of three said yes, just to get that copy back.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, through the chair, address the board?
Yes.
I have questions on how you did it in the past because I haven't been to a public meeting in the past. So it's my assumption that everyone got a copy of the plans or the, and supporting documents, paper documents, how did the, how did the public view all of this?
They didn't. And so that often was a question when the public would come to a meeting, is they would say, "I don't understand. All I saw was the legal notice or whatever was mailed to them as a neighbor." And so that often was the kind of genesis of their questions, was, "I don't understand exactly what they want." Or especially on fence cases, which get, right, very confusing. You know, I mean, that's often who would attend, especially if people didn't know their neighbors. If people did know their neighbors, you know, then they'd ask them, "What are you doing?" But that was very common, that, you know, people wouldn't even show up to the meeting and all they would get was an agenda in the back. There was nothing for them to see what we were considering.
So I've worked in other cities and other places, and they have a PowerPoint presentation similar to what we have on the screen today that would show all of the plans and all of the supporting documentation, and a, somebody from staff from the building department would present that similar to what we do now, read the findings of fact would be on there, and it would be on a screen off to the side that everyone could see. I don't know how the chambers are set up, that you could set up a screen and a laptop and a projector with a PowerPoint, but I think, as Brianna said, I think IT should be able to handle that without too much inconvenience or too much trouble. And then if you still wanted to use the big screen, I'm pretty sure they have a projector in there for that big screen, that we would run a laptop to that also. So if we could somehow run two screens, one for the board and the staff, and one for the public, I think it would solve everyone's problems. And again, to the point that, yeah, these plans and these supporting documents are very expensive to produce for the applicant.
This is Brianna, and I would just like to add something, so...
I was just going to say, if we go do this electronically, then it would seem to me that, that when we send out the notice for this meeting, that you would also send an app or something to say, "This is the plans," and that the person could look at them before they come to the meeting.
Through the chair to the board, this is Brianna. In the legal notices, I think it, I want to say it's the second or third paragraph, it does state that if anyone wishes to review the documents that were submitted, they can visit City Hall, and it gives the hours were open, and there has been many times that people have come into City Hall asking to review the drawings or whatever it may be that they submit. Sometimes it's pictures with fences, so the public can view those during business hours.
Good, that's good. I never realized that people actually took advantage of that. That's really important.
So to the board, through the chair, this is Wayne. I, we're still going to need hard copies for our files, and maybe we could reduce it to one for the board and one for the building department and anybody else that would have to keep a record of this. But we would need to at least have one hard copy for us, the city, to file as a, as a legal documents.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, what do you think?
Regarding doing the, doing it without documentation or trying to lessen it, I mean, I don't know how much, you know, in my opinion, the pages are very costly, but if you're applying for something that's very important, you know, you sometimes have to pay to have this done. I don't know if you need the tune of 12 copies, but I do like the idea of having a teleprompter or something like that at the meeting where you can actually see the drawings so that the people, when they're talking, or anyone who wants to, or any neighbors who are coming in, can get familiar with it really quickly if they have not seen any of the facts and they just got a notification about the meeting, but nothing more than that. So I think that if it's a very expensive job, then the price of the plans are probably not a problem. But when somebody's going in for a fence or something like that, you know, or they have to get a, you know, a site survey and spend all kinds of money, maybe that's an issue, but I don't have a problem with trying to reduce documentation if it's going to help people to, you know, want to come to the table and ask for variances. I would hope that they would not come because of that reason, but, you know, I guess anything can happen, you know. If Mo says that that's what he's heard, then it's also...
If it's an option that we could reduce that for people, I think we should try, and the fact that it's in our, you know, procedures leads to, you know, us needing to make that decision, like, determination.
Chair, if I may, why don't we do some fact-finding and do some investigation with IT? Get with them and see what the possibilities are, and maybe at our next meeting, we can discuss the best way to proceed.
Okay, should we, and maybe this is a question for Dawn, is, are we restricted to making changes to our rules of procedure only at this meeting? And, or can we make changes in January?
To the board, you are seeing the rules of procedures that you currently have, change them, but your question is, do you need to change them now, or can you change them later after you take the action? Or before? Because if you, I mean, I guess going forward, if you want to, you know, make the changes but not take any action or do anything prior to you amending the rules of procedure, then that would be fine. But you don't want to do something and then amend the rules of procedure now that you're going to be doing in the future. So I don't know if that addressed the question that you had.
Well, I've noticed that in Article 2 says that a resolution supported by two-thirds of the members may temporarily suspend any rule of procedure or change the date or time. So I mean, temporarily is kind of vague, and, you know, if we, if we in a few months temporarily suspend that rule for a while and make it a smaller number, I think we could, you know, at least keep temporarily suspending that rule.
Until the next December?
Because I don't have the rules of procedure in front of me, but that makes sense also.
Okay.
You got that in there that says you could temporarily, and even though temporarily is vague, I think that you all would know, okay, our temporarily time period is over.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that works for me. I just, I didn't know if people would be interested in pursuing something like that, so it's good to hear that at least we can explore some options. And then since the city will still need a hard copy, if there's any board members that prefer a hard copy, we could maybe just reduce the hard copy to, you know, less...
Yeah, and maybe, you know, if certain members, if certain members, if certain of us don't need a hard copy, we can reduce it by them if certain members do still want a hard copy, we can leave those copies in.
Right, perfect. That makes sense to me. All right, anybody have anything else they want to discuss on the rules of procedures?
Chair?
Yes.
This is Lisa Hawkins, the cable manager. I just wanted to clear up something for you. There are six monitors in council chambers. Two of them face the council DS, so whatever PowerPoint that you present or video is shown to those two monitors that face the council. There's also the projector which is shown behind you, but council doesn't usually look at that. They usually look at the two monitors. And then creating a PowerPoint is no problem, so if you had a video or a PowerPoint, we would just put it in there, and then you can control it remotely through the little tab selector that's provided on the computer there. But there are two monitors for councils viewing or for the commissions viewing if they needed to see a PowerPoint.
Okay, would it be the same display on all of the monitors?
Yes, if you call up, whatever page you call up, it's shown on the big monitor in the back, and all six, four that are facing the audience and two that are facing the council or the committee.
Got it, understood. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been two years, it seems, since we've been in chambers. It's been two years, it seems, since we've been in chambers. Um, okay, did anybody have anything else? Otherwise, we should probably, um, I don't know, do we need to adopt these? Or no, I guess if we don't make changes, we don't adopt anything. We haven't made changes since 16. Um, Dawn, can I ask one other question? And this is just a little strange, only because it kind of came up in one of our minutes. Um, in 2016, I think is when we revised our procedures to explicitly ask the appellant if they agreed with the finding of facts. And usually they say, yes, I agree, but, you know, maybe I add something, or most of the time they don't. However, um, in one of our last cases, an appellant said, that's incorrect. Those facts are incorrect. This person that lives, you know, kitty corner from me has a, you know, structure in their, um, you know, uh, side lot or rear yard setback or whatever. Um, I just kind of let it fly. We didn't stop the process or anything, but um, is that like the right procedure? Just if, if they want to disagree, they can disagree and you just let them go on records stating that?
I would say you want a record. If they definitely say they don't agree with it, you definitely want that on record. I don't think, you know, without looking over this, I have my glasses on, I'm looking at the screen, Brianna, but I got new glasses. That if they, I mean, what else, what other option would they have? Are you saying that once they say, no, I don't agree with the facts, and then you say you just went on with the procedure? Are you asking, is there something else that could be done?
Yeah, is, just as, as the, as the chair, is there anything different I should have done? I mean, again, it's noted in the minutes that he disagreed with us. We had no proof of it. Um, uh, you know, and I mean, I, I don't know that it was even necessarily material.
Okay.
Um, but.
Jody, I have a, a question that, about that exact case. That um, he, he was on a corner and the person across from him was not. So it, it was irrelevant.
I see.
What he was saying was absolutely not true. I mean, he, yeah, the person across the street had a fence or, or whatever it was, and uh, the, it was a completely different configuration. One, he, his was on a corner and that's what his argument was, was the side yard setback. And he said other people had it, but they were not on corners.
Got it.
But I, I don't know that I should argue that or if I should have made that point.
Well, right.
Hearing, um. But again, I'm just trying to, you know, I, I, as far as I don't wanna be disruptive and, and get into a confrontation with a.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, so I, I just let it go as you did, as everyone did. I, I mean, I, I wanted to correct him and say, I'm sorry, that's not correct. Here's the reason why. I don't know that I need to explain that to him.
Mm-hmm.
And if I may through the chair to the board, um, realizing that these cases, I haven't done one in a while, but if we're to appeal your decision and if there was a case that goes to court, I can speak from the attorney who would take it to circuit court that the clearer the record is, um, I don't, and again, forgive me, I'm not prepared and I can't give back to you, but as I picture the appellant saying I disagree, then you continue with the process and then you're gonna give the reason for your decisions. I don't know at what point you would say, although you disagree, this is what we have. Because of course, what I want, when I'm going up to circuit court is a good record that the judge can see. So I don't know if that helps either. But that's my first thought, just off the top of my head.
Okay, no, I mean, I think that's fine. I, I, and, and I figured that was kind of the, you know, I don't, I didn't think we did anything incorrectly. Um, it was just, you know, at, at what point, um, you know, it, like, like Wayne's asking, at what point do we correct, you know, incorrect information? Again, because it can be appealed uh, to the circuit court, so.
Yeah. And, and your conclusion, bring it up and say, although you said that is.
Okay.
I think, I'm thinking again from a different, you know, place where I would be in court and writing a brief and going for the circuit court judge and they would look at the record and, and see that you all acknowledged that, but you also came back in your conclusion with your decision that that was incorrect.
One, one of the other issues with that is, is that it's irrelevant to that case. We're here to hear the case on this particular parcel. And, and, you know, we can't look at everything else in the neighborhood while, because he says, oh, that guy's got a fence and that guy's got a fence and that other guy's got a fence. That may be true, but they may be illegal. They may have other cases on them. You know, we're not gonna research every single property in that neighborhood to, to verify what he's saying at the hearing. We can say, you know, we can look into it and we will investigate those other claims. But, you know, yeah, he can, I think he should be able to disagree, um, but it doesn't, I don't think we have any um, intention to, or, um.
Obligation?
Uh, we don't have, we can't, I guess we can't document it as far as part of the record at the time. We can come back to it and say, yeah, we'll look into that. We'll come up, you know, and, and we'll look into your concerns or something to that effect. But I don't, I don't see how we could, because they could say anything they want.
Right, right.
You know, it's he said, she said sort of thing. And, and we have to go find out if, if what they're saying is true.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, that's fine. I just was, I was curious if Dawn had any opinion. Okay, does anybody else have any changes? Any thoughts?
One of the things that, uh, you know, that he said, she said, Wayne, do, do they get a copy of the beforehand of the finding of facts?
I don't think so. I don't think it's published. I don't think they see it until we read it.
Through, through the chair to Mr. Wagon, this is Brianna. No, we do not provide the appellant our findings ahead of time.
Why not?
I really don't know how to answer that question.
I mean, it seems to me that, it seems to me that, that uh, they should have the finding of fact uh, beforehand, and if they dispute anything, uh, go to Wayne or something like that and, and discuss it. So that, so that there isn't this he said, she said, uh, at the meeting. Uh, they don't need to get what the, what is recommended, but the finding of fact, I would think should be supplied to the uh, applicant.
Dawn, do you have any thoughts on that? Are we opening ourselves up to more?
Um, with the chair to the board, again, off the, you know, just listening to this without too much preparation, I always think, um, if they were to get that, do you want them to have a conversation with someone outside of the public meeting? If they have some concerns about the findings and the fact, I think you will want a, a public record of that. Um, and Brianna, did you say that's, it's always been done, they don't get the finding of fact until the actual meeting?
So they, it's just read into the record. They're not given a physical copy of the findings.
So, yeah. The concern would be that they receive some information prior to being read into the record at an open meeting. Transparency, uh, if they come back and, and I know, uh, Wes, you said, so it's not a bunch of he said, she said, but also you wanna protect yourself, so they don't come back and say, well, I did have this conversation, you know? You don't have a public record of that. You have that Friday or two of being read into the record. So it would be interesting to see if it has ever been done differently, where someone called and told them, this is the findings of, finding of fact.
Well, I guess I would worry if they went and, you know, prepared a counterpoint to every fact we presented and they're, they're ready to argue it at the meeting, at the public hearing, and then were not prepared. It almost like becomes like a, a, a court, um, proceeding at that point where, you know, they took discovery and, and we didn't get like counter discovery or something, right? Like, they're ready to argue and we're not ready to respond to those.
Well, it seems to me that if you did it beforehand, if they had any questions on the finding of fact, they need to go to Wayne. And, and if, if at that point, they disagree, uh, when it comes up for, for our board, said that there's a disagreement on this, uh, uh, the city's finding of fact, uh, we will accept and then move from there.
Well, we, just for the record, we do have several conversations with the applicant before they ever get to the board. I mean, we're the ones who, who, who are the ones who inform them that they have to go to the board and for what reasons. Um, so we have a lot of contact with the applicant prior to it ever going to, you know, to the board for approval. Um, and we, we discuss a lot of those types of things. The findings of fact, I think, are um, exactly that. They're just a, a uh, way of reading into the record, uh, the surrounding area, the facts of the case. I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. Um, and again, it would open up a, a line of, uh, questioning and, and things like that, that they would, like Jody said, you know, at the hearing, they could literally question every single item and come up with something that, you know, a, a, a counterpoint, so to speak, that would, it would delay the meeting, it would cause, and, and again, we wouldn't be prepared to answer all of the questions or all of the disputes that they could bring up as far as, um, the findings of fact or, or, I, I just don't think it should be something that should be disputed to that, to that extent. I mean, if they, if they don't agree with something, they can put it in the record they don't agree with it. And that's fine. And we can respond with, we, we can investigate. And if, if it goes any further than that, then we can address it. But I think the findings of fact should, should remain the way they are.
Well, it seems to me that, that uh, you know, if they disagree with the finding of fact and they let you know, that's fine. And then it comes before the board and said that, that they disagree with us and uh, so be it. Uh, if they wanna dispute that or go to court or whatever it is they wanna do, then so be it. But we don't need to argue with them there. The point of them arguing is with you, Wayne, and uh, comes to, it comes, it comes, it comes to us as a fait accompli. Uh, but what I, what I am.
Had those arguments with them about going to the board. I mean, you know, it's, it's never a pleasant, pleasant, uh, you know, answer for them when I tell them, I'm sorry, I can't approve this because uh, it, it needs, you know, zoning board of approval. Uh, so I, I just, um, you know, I, I don't, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to do whatever you guys wanna do. That's not a problem. Um, but again, this has worked, um, for many years, uh, with this format and this procedure in place. And yes, if they wanna dispute it, um, it, it, it's what they wanna dispute, first of all. Is it something minor? Is it something, you know, that could change the outcome of the case? Um, because we're gonna make our recommendation long before the findings of fact. I mean, as far as the building department, you know, I, I, I go with, you know, the building officials' recommendation. We sit down and have a, a, a discussion about each case and how the building department wants to, what the recommendation would be to approve or not to approve, or to approve with modifications or whatever, however we ju- choose to, to proceed. So I don't see that changing this procedure is going to accomplish anything by letting them see it in advance. I think we're, we're opening the door for confrontation.
Well, uh, we're supposed to be serving the public and uh, in my tenure, I've probably 20 years, I don't know how long, uh, we have never, except for this one case that Jody brought up, I never had anybody that I can remember ever disputed the finding of fact. And that, that is true. Um, so I don't, I don't see the danger that you're seeing, Wayne, but, but uh, I just don't know. I just, seems to me that, that we are working for these people and trying to come up with a, with a reasonable solution. And uh, hiding things is not, as far as I'm concerned, not the way to go, but that's my opinion.
If the appellant asked for it, would it be given to them?
Through the chair to the board, this is Brianna. That has happened before where appellants have come in ahead of time and I share the findings of facts with them without the opinion. And I don't give them paper copies. I just, I don't think I've ever really like read all of them, but I just give them an overview of what were, what's being stated in the facts as far as the type of construction, the um, use groups and all that. And that's only happened twice.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I'm sure there are some appellants that are very nervous and wanna ask a lot of questions about, you know, what's the procedure? How's it gonna go? What should I do? You know, some people wanna be overly prepared. Other people, you know, obviously we know like, right, sign companies do this across the area, you know, every day of the week. Um, but, you know, I mean, I think, I think what, you know, Mr. Wagon's kinda referring to is like the small guy, right? The small guy who's coming up, doing this himself. He's got whatever his project is. You know, he probably paid the survey, whatever, but, you know, wants to, you know, doesn't wanna be hit with any surprises. So I guess what's important to know is that a appellant should ask questions of the building department and you can provide um, insight if there's, you know, any, any questions or concerns about how the zoning board operates, our procedures and how, how a case is heard. So, I guess I'm not, I'm not inclined to completely change the, change what's given to the appellant at this time. I say, let's kind of see how we um, keep going and see if we have any other kind of situations or circumstances where there's uh, disagreement. All right, so then I don't think we have any proposed changes to the rules of procedure, so those will stand. Um, anybody have any uh, final thoughts before we adjourn?
Just one, I hope everyone has a nice, uh, nice holiday. And uh, we'll get together, I guess, and see everybody's face in person in the new year, right?
That sounds like the plan.
That's, I was gonna come on and say, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are back to in-person meetings in council chambers, January 18th. I know it's been said a few times through the meeting. I just wanted to say it myself too. Um, but happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. Um, okay, so then I guess we need a motion to adjourn our last meeting of 2021.
I so moved.
Thank you. Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
All right, that is approved and we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.